All right, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna do a roll call since we are missing some folks, so I'm gonna do it tonight. Uh, Jade and Rhonda who are missing, but we, it looks like we have a quorum. And so I'm gonna call this order, the Wabash City Schools Board Meeting, uh, for Monday, August the fourth of 2025. If you would please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools' mission is to provide a relevant event and rigorous education, foster bond relationships, and to ensure each student is college, be career-ready for success in a global community. Welcome to all of you who are here, and it looks like we have the rec- right, sorry, recognitions tonight. We have, uh, the boys track team that participated in the state track meet. And it looks like we have Mr. Evans here to help us out with that.
Yeah, so I can introduce them. You want? Coulson competed in the hundred and the two hundred at the state meet, made the finals in both, one hundred and two hundred, and I looked, I cannot find another county athlete ever that was ever all-state in the hundred and two hundred in the same meet, let alone just being all-state in one of those two is very, 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 very rare. And he did it in both. And in the process set two new school records, and he's only a junior, so, um, it was, it was a great day for him. And then these guys here, the four-by-eight, that's Ezra, and that's Jace, Ice Hair Man. Jonas and Kaden, they, uh, finished nineteenth.
Yep.
Yep, nineteenth in the state. They were not supposed to be, uh, that good, but they ended up beating a lot of schools when they got down there. And in the process set a new school record multiple times throughout the season, but ended up setting the final one, the best one, at that meet. So, we've never had a four-by-eight relay ever go to the state meet, ever. I think the last time a relay team actually made it to the state meet was like in the thirties. Like when, when track was still like in its infancy. Um, so, for such a small school as we are, to compete against the schools that were down there, if you look at the names of the schools that were there, they're all mega schools and six A, class six A football schools, you know, like Zionsville and Carmel and Center Grove and all these huge mega schools that, they send their relay teams all the time because they got, you know, a hundred and fifty kids on their team. But for a school of this size to be able to do that, um, is remarkable. And they put in the work throughout the winter, just to get to this point. It's not like they just showed up on the first day and said, hey, coach, we just wanna go to the state meet, let's, let's do it. I said, we, we, we put in the work throughout the winter to get to this point, and they're not gonna say anything. They're humble enough to, to just put their nose to the, to the grindstone and just work, 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 work. And I couldn't be more proud, and I hope the community as well is, is the same as me, because seeing their work ethic, some of those days in the winter when it's cold and they gotta still do some stuff, it was awesome, so.
Awesome.
How many kids in your family?
Uh, I have three older sisters.
So no wonder you can run fast. I mean, that was my first thought. Congratulations. I taught at Wabash for many, many years, and I watched a lot of really, really good runners. Um, still some state records for high jump and some things like that, but you guys really busted it. I love it. I love it. I love it. For those of you who are going to college or gonna run?
Yeah.
Where are you headed? Just tell me where.
I'm going to Calvin University in greater half of Michigan.
Okay.
I'm going to Grace College. Grace College.
Uh, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Now, the Michigan, I have trouble with. I'm gonna Ohio State. Uh, I'm thrilled for you though, guys. I bet you hate to see it come to an end, right? And congratulations, Coach. I remember when you were a beginning teacher and that kind of thing, and you've come, this is great. This is great. Congratulations.
Thank you guys for coming back from graduation. Number one, you graduated. Thanks for coming back for you two. Thank you guys all for showing up tonight and just being a great representation of Wabash County, Wabash City and Wabash County for that matter. Uh, it's really, it's awesome to see. I, I see you guys running all the time. Where I live, I can see you guys running. You guys put the work in. It's, it's not just something that Coach says. I see it. So it's really cool to see you guys, uh, be accomplishing what you guys did. It's awesome, so. And Coach, I do appreciate all you do. It, it's not something that everyone sees, and so I want you to know, it's, it's, I see it, so I appreciate it.
Period. Standing students in the classrooms too, subs and others.
And appreciate it too.
If I address the board, I just want to highlight a couple, one thing, and that is, um, in all fifty states, Indiana is the only state that does not do a class-state meet. So these guys are the only state in the country that small schools are competing against the big ones.
Yeah.
And the reason why these guys have developed, and you guys have called it out, is Coach Evans' dedication and commitment to pouring into these guys as athletes, but also as humans, is remarkable. And as a parent, I'm so grateful that they're part of the Wabash City Schools track team, uh, because we, they've made a difference in our board.
I didn't realize they didn't have class. That is, who knows, man? I, we won the state baseball championship in A. What, Josh?
Six.
And it was, there was no class baseball, and, you know, we went up, ironically, we played against Marion, and it was like, you know, the Goliath versus the giant on so many levels. Wow, that is just, well, that is just, well.
All right. You guys may stay if you would like to, but feel free to leave if you would like to as well. Mass ex to this, is it okay? All right, here's, we have some revisions to forward tonight. We have on the board, uh, to approve revisions for O through T. And board to approve the removal of four, Jay, out of the board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then, revisions have been approved. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on an agenda item? All right, consent agenda. We have minutes from July twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. Got some claims, donations tonight, no financials as well. The next regular scheduled board, oh, sorry. This is my first go around, so thank you. Uh, I'll take a motion for consent agenda.
Someone, I second it.
All right, um, so any of those, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting is on May, nope, Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at Wabash City Hall. And that'll be at six P. M. We have some items of communication there. No old business, we got some new business tonight. And so the board is to approve twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six evaluation plan. Just, I'll take a motion.
Someone, I second it.
All right, discussion.
Um, each year the board is required to approve our staff evaluation, uh, plan. Um, the changes that we have made this year are as follows. I'll just highlight them. First, we are allowed to remove the effective, highly effective, um, those categories by state law, but we've elected to keep them. Our, our staff is familiar with them. Um, we have a long cycle, which is for teachers in first and second year. It used to be in years one through three, so we wanted that to align, and when a new teacher gets their license, it's a two-year license, so they would be on the long cycle during those first two years. Um, they will get two obser- or two long observations and two short observations. It used to be two long and three short, so we've reduced that by one. Um, the short cycle is for teachers that are in years three and beyond with Wabash City Schools. Um, it used to be four years and beyond, and the number of observations they receive, one long and two short, remains the same. Um, we also have, are looking at changing the attendance under core professionalism. And right now, the current verbiage was anytime that attendance becomes a detriment to the classroom due to absences within the control of the faculty member. We have found that that is very vague, and so we wanted something that was a little more like, this is exactly what it means. Um, so we are changing it to missing more than the yearly PTO allotment. Professional and bereavement days not included, out at the M L A documentation. So if somebody has surgery and they're gonna be out for fifteen days, that does not count against them. Um, professional days that we send them on conferences do not count against them or bereavement days. Um, so this change does mean that if teachers miss more than fifteen days, um, they will get a minus one on their final evaluation.
Any questions from the board?
On the evaluations, um, how are you dividing that up? If it's one school now, who's gonna do, like, middle school teachers and who'll do the high school teachers?
Mike, Mike is in charge of all of the evaluations.
When does he have to have those done?
Um, we usually have them done by the last day of school. We are working with this reduction. He thinks he will be able to have them done sooner. The only thing is, is there is data for SLOs that we have to wait until we get, like, I-Lern data. Um, so we have a plan that he can do their summative meeting before the end of the school year. It will be, um, uh, contingent on the SLO data, but we can do that, enter the data in our, um, online platform, and then the teachers can sign off digitally.
By the last day of school, okay.
Do we get any feedback from staff on the evaluation process and how they feel those, or you met that?
We have never done that.
Is it a checkoff thing, or is it a, a gut feeling on some of the things that the administrators or I can't remember?
There's a rubric that they call it that's very detailed about if a teacher does this, there are one, a two, a three, or a four.
And the short evaluations, do those involve a rubric as well, or is it just?
We use the same rubric for all, all observations.
But teachers in trouble then in terms of discipline and, and they get a poor, uh, a less than satisfactory evaluation. Um, do you work with them then before the next, before the next short visit and that kind of thing? Do they have mentor teachers?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of approving the evaluation plan, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. I leave. Board to approve WCS property liability and automotive workers' comp insurance renewal. I'll take a motion. So move.
And I'll second it. Yeah, that, yeah. Okay, we were informed earlier this year that our insurance carrier was dropping us. Um, over the past four years, we had several high-dollar claims, um, the elevators, the middle school air handler, the flood at OJ, and then the bus accident. Um, our agent, Daniel Smith, at InGuard worked very hard to find a company for us. Um, we've received a renewal proposal from Church Mutual. Last year, our total cost for these insurances was two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. The new policy, um, is going to be three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. This is, um, quite an increase, which I will be honest, I expected it. Um, one bright spot is that Church Mutual will do quarterly invoicing with us, so our previous carrier required a one-time payment in August. Um, so it's nice to know that we can do quarterly payments, and we have it in our budget to pay the two quarterly payments for this year, so we know building our budget for next year, what we need to have in it. Um, so that, that was, uh, as someone said, a silver lining and a, a, a dark cloud.
So the elevators come against us? It's not like they smashed down or anything?
No, there was, uh, it was.
They got all shut, shut, shorted out when a, when a electrical storm hit.
Yep.
Oh.
And we had to replace all the, all the entrance.
Uh, it was quite.
It's an electrical problem.
Was that the same time that the flood happened?
Yeah.
Yep.
No, it was earlier.
It was the air handler.
Okay, maybe there was something else around that time too. It was a lot once.
And just, this, this is paid out of operations.
Yeah. All right. Which then just puts that more of a pinch on that.
Yeah, other things to do.
All right, any other questions? All right, uh, all those in favor for the insurance renewal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. C, board to approve twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six transportation handbook with the highlighted changes on page six. Seems like we have Ms. Callahan here to help us out with that.
Yeah, so under the post-trip inspection, we added an item that allows drivers to be paid up to an hour and a half to clean their bus. If it's extra dirty, there's extra mud or dirt tracked in, tracked in after a field trip. Um, so hopefully that'll help them if they do have to clean their buses after a dirty field trip. And then the student discipline matrix, just a little more clear, and it's got the steps outlined a little bit better, I think, about what steps the driver should take, and then if they do all those steps, then it moves to admin, and hopefully that helps the drivers also.
Any questions from the board? Oh, we didn't do a motion?
No.
Oh, goodness, I apologize.
I make a motion.
I appreciate that.
I'll second it.
This is told you. All right.
Uh, I just wanna say that Mrs. Callahan has done a great job as our transportation director. Um, I appreciate that she went through the student discipline matrix. I think that it's great to have it consistent across all buildings, um, so families know what's expected regardless of what building you're in.
Do all the buses have cameras on them?
Yes.
Okay. I wanna on a field trip one day. Yeah, okay. If it's entertaining, I'm sure, yeah.
The bus drivers go through a lot.
They do.
All right, any other questions?
No.
All right, I'll let you have that motion taken care of. Uh, I'll, uh, ask if you would take a vote on the transportation handbook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. D, approve compensation totaling five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight and seventy-one cents to Natasha Whitney for a foregoing her prep period to teach sections in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I'll accept a motion.
So move.
I second it.
All right, any discussion?
Um, Mrs. Whitney will be picking up some of our math courses after we lost two of our math teachers. She will continue to teach two business courses, I believe. Um, and to sure, to ensure that we have all our math classes covered, we do need her to teach during her prep. Um, she is willing to do this, which is greatly appreciated, and the additional compensation is figured by calculating her, um, her, per-period rate and multiplying that by the hundred and eighty-five days.
Four math classes. Are they?
She's, uh, largely teaching pre-algebra and algebra.
Okay, algebra.
Eight graders and eighth grader chemo kind of.
Math teachers are so easy to find, aren't they?
They are.
Just grown right on trees, aren't they?
Is the hope for this is to be, you know, one year and then to kind of reevaluate how things go next year?
Yeah, that's the plan, and the math is in a bit of a transition with what's happening with the new diploma requirements as well, so.
Sure, okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. What was that?
I sounded glad she was willing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big ask. All right, the, all those in favor of Natasha doing this for us, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item E, board to approve the following extra PTO day for Kristen Hoppus, Kitlin Cornette, Jade Stumbo, and Jacqueline Holly, and two hundred and fifty in the valic account for Yorama Rodriguez, uh, for the wellness screenings participation, uh, except the motion.
So move.
I second it. Discussion.
Um, each year in the spring, we offer wellness screenings in partnership with Parkview, and staff that participate are entered into a drawing, and one person from each building gets the extra PTO day, and one person from all that participated gets the two hundred and fifty dollar deposit into their valic account, and this does come from our forfeiture account. Um, so the individuals listed are the winners from last spring's screenings, and I think last spring's, um, number that participated was one of the highest we've had.
That's great.
It almost stumbled the year before.
That's great.
All right, any questions from the board?
Do they do this during like the spring health fair at, at Parkview?
No, we, they come to our school, and we do it on a staff PD day, so we do it like, uh, from seven to nine. That way it works out great. They're not rushing to get back to their other buildings.
That's what mine's the same.
That's great.
To accommodate you.
All right, all those in favor of the extra PTO and, uh, the two hundred and fifty valic account deposit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item F, board to approve the following classified transfers. Tammy Mait at L H two as a preschool para to kindergarten para, beginning in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, and Stephanie Harden at OJ from Rise para to Gen Ed para. I'll accept a motion.
So move.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Um, we appreciate these two ladies' willingness to move into new positions for the upcoming school year.
Definitely. Anything from the board, questions? All right. Uh, any, sorry, uh, for those who are. Um, yeah, I was getting. All right, all those in favor of, uh, the following classified transfers, approving the classified transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. G, board to approve the hiring of the following classified staff. Don Saunders as a para, uh, preschool para at L H, beginning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Adam Miller as a middle school, high school custodian at twenty to twenty-five hours per week at the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Emily Mans as a permanent sub at, at fourth grade. DLI from August eleventh through twenty-fifth as a sub, at substitute pay. And Morgan Sprague as a Rise para professional at twelve dollars an hour effective August eighth, twenty twenty-five. I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion.
I second it.
All right, discussion.
Um, Mrs. Saunders worked for our district for many, many years, so we're excited to welcome her back, um, to the Wabash City Schools. Mr. Miller is a senior, correct? Um, and he's gonna assist our custo- custodians after school with trash, trash collection. Um, we have done this in the past where we've hired students, and it's worked out very well. Um, Ms. Mans will be filling in in our fourth grade DLI. Hopefully, uh, we have a teacher on their way. Um, she has sub for us before in the DLI's classrooms. She does speak Spanish, so it's, I'm glad that we were able to get a Spanish-speaking sub in there. Um, we're thankful that she's willing to fill in for us. And finally, Ms. Sprague, um, will fill an open para position in the Rise room. Um, she worked for us last year and was not able to continue employment, so we're excited that she is able to come back.
All right, any questions from the board?
What is the Rise program?
Um, it is functional skills.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Do that again. All right. All right, those who are in favor of hiring the classified staff, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item H, board to approve the hiring of Sierra Phillips at, at middle school, high school as a math teacher, beginning at, at the beginning teacher salary of forty thousand and twenty dollars. I'll accept the motion.
So move. Second.
All right, discussion.
Uh, Ms. Phillips has worked for us as a substitute teacher and para for several years. She does have a bachelor's degree in educational studies. Um, she'll start on an emergency permit, and then she is going to work towards getting a master's degree in math, which will allow her to get her regular license. Um, we're excited for her to begin her teaching career with us.
All right, any questions from the board?
Was she hall before she got married?
Yes.
Okay, she played basketball for us?
So she's around before. She's been here.
Paul was remaining?
Hall.
Oh, okay.
Hall.
All right.
Good kid.
Yeah, very good, very good kid.
I don't know Sierra, but it sounds like she's a great kid.
Yeah, she's a good kid. She's good on the basketball court too. Okay.
All right, those in favor of hiring Sierra Phillips as our next math teacher at the high school, middle school, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Welcome Sierra. All right, item I, board to approve Brock Ireland as the middle school choir teacher at the beginning of teacher's salary, at the beginning of teacher's salary of forty thousand and twenty dollars pending license and sugar.
I make a motion.
I second it.
All right, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Ireland served as a para and a teaching para for us last year. He has a musical theater degree, so he'll start on an emergency permit as well. Um, he will begin working on a master's degree, which will allow him to apply from his regular license. Um, last year he did a great job for us, very flexible, um, and we're excited to hire him as our middle school choir teacher.
He'll be fine. He also was helpful in the grease, uh, production. I thought they did a fantastic job. So, yeah, I think that's awesome. Anyone else from the board that question or?
An emergency permit, how long do they have? How does that roll the, the year or what?
It does, but if they can show that they have taken course.
X number of hours and stuff.
Yeah, to, um, get the degree, we're allowed to bring it with.
Okay.
All right, those in favor of approving Brock Ireland to join our staff, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? All right, motion passes. Welcome Brock. All right. Item K, board to approve promoting Diana George to the middle school head cook position with a pay increase of a dollar sixty-five per hour effective August eighth, twenty twenty-five. I'll accept the motion.
So move.
I second it.
All right, sorry, discussion.
Uh, Ms. Harold has been working with Mrs. George to take over as the head cook at the middle school, high school. Um, Mrs. Harold said that she has done a really great job learning the position, and we are excited to move her into that, uh, spot permanently.
All right, any questions?
No.
All right, those in favor of promoting Diana George to the head cook position, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item L, board to approve the resignation of Alex Stahl at W A M S, her para professional. I'll accept the motion.
So move.
I second it.
Discussion.
Um, Mrs. Stahl requested a leave of absence last year. Unfortunately, she's not able to return. We wanna thank her for her time and services to Wabash City Schools and continue to keep her in our thoughts and prayers.
All right, any questions? All right, the board to approve their resignation, sorry? Yeah. Uh, those who approve the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item M, board to approve the bus routes for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year with a few route updates. I'll accept the motion.
So move.
I second it.
Discussion.
Uh, we do have Mrs. Callahan here. Um, she can review the changes for our bus routes for this coming year.
So I had a driver reach out to me and ask if we could add a stop to her route because it better accommodate some of her kids. She's getting a bunch of younger kids in this spot, and that stop fits right in between a couple of the existing stops, so that seemed like a no-brainer, so we added that. And then, as you all know, we had to combine a route for the last few months of last year. Um, looks like we're going to do that at least for the beginning of this year. Um, we may have another driver coming onboard that we can split the routes again, but as of now, we're gonna start the year with combined route again.
Do, do we have software that we're able to get, uh, to help with the bus routes and all that? Is that, how's that working? Is it helpful or is it?
It's very helpful, yeah.
Still this job?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a great software.
How far do our drivers go? Do they still watch Rowan and?
We get Rowan, LaFountain, Urbana.
All over.
All over.
I, I wanted to.
All right, any other questions? All right. Well, let's see, so, those in favor of accepting the changes in the bus routes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Item N, board to approve the following coaches for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Varsity softball, Alicia Galati, softball assistant, Nick Galati, high school cheerleading volunteer, Caitlin Bowles. Middle school tennis head coach, Matt Zikafus, middle school football assistant, Austin Hyatt, middle school cheerleading volunteer, Jacy Gall, volunteer, oh, volleyball volunteers, Ava Morris and Emma Tracy. I'll accept the motion.
So move.
I second.
Discussion.
Um, most of these people are people who coached for us already. Uh, Austin Hyatt is a Wabash grad who is coming back to help with football, and Alicia is a teacher, and it's the first teacher that we've had coach softball in probably twelve, thirteen years, so, uh, so we're looking forward to that. So we're looking forward to that, so.
All right, those in favor of approving the coaches, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item O. Board to approve the hiring of Megan Handing as the middle school, high school fifth grade para professional at the hourly rate of $11 per hour, not to exceed the 29.75 hours per week. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Last year, our fifth grade para position opened up in the spring, and we did not fill it. So Mrs. Handing is filling that position. We want to welcome her to Wabash City Schools.
All right. Those in favor of hiring Megan Handing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item P. Board will be informed of the 24-25 aggregate teacher evaluation results for each building. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So I put together a quick presentation to just show we are required to share the aggregate teacher evaluation results. So this is for 24-25. Elementary results, LH Carpenter, they have eight certified staff that fall into this requirement. All eight were rated as highly effective. At OJ, we have 28 certified teaching staff. Eighteen were rated as highly effective, and 10 were rated as effective. Moving on to secondary. The middle school has 28 certified staff. Eleven were rated as highly effective, and 17 were rated as effective. And the high school, there are 29 certified staff, nine rated as highly effective, and 20 rated as effective. Next year, this will be combined into one. So when you look across the district, we had 93 certified teachers that were evaluated, and we had 46 that were rated as highly effective, so 49.5%. And 47 were rated as effective, 50.5%.
So is there a discussion amongst those who are grading teachers? What the criteria is? Like, how you guys are kind of like, is there apples and apples? I know it's got difficult, right?
Right, and that is something that you will always see differences between. And that is something that we can work on as evaluators to have that inner rate of reliability.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. I mean, I'm sure that it's done to the best of your guys' ability, but like, how do we do the best we can across the whole board of the school district? So, okay. That's everyone else. We don't have to do any approval of that.
No, that was just, we have to.
Information.
Review of it.
Well, thank you. Any questions for the board? Item Q. Recommend board approving FMLA leave for employee 1987, beginning August 8th through, August 8th, 2025 through November 7th, 2025. I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion.
I second.
All right, discussion.
I recommend the board approve this FMLA leave request.
Those in favor of the FMLA leave, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item R. Approve WCS health insurance renewal. I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Last week, we met with InGuard and our plan administrator, AGA. Over the last year, our plan has worked very well for us. Our self-funded account has a good balance. Our cost this year will go up by four and a half percent, which is really good. I looked up the national average for health insurance increases for 2025, and it's about seven to nine percent. So we're below that. And part of that is just because our employees have done a good job using the insurance, using the various benefits that we have to make costs cheaper for us. So for next year, our total maximum cost for 25-26 will be $2,340,311. And those are shared between the district and employees. And some of that comes from ed funds, some of it comes from operations. Just depends on where the person is paid from.
Sure. Any questions from the board?
You sit down and talk with them and talk about deductibles, and if they would take the higher deductible, then, you know, it'd be less. When does that happen?
Yeah, we've shared information about, you know, the benefit of moving to the HSA, the high deductible, and, you know, that it's a lower cost, so that puts more money in your pocket to be putting money into your HSA.
Why should they take advantage of that?
Does the wellness program, does that help at all with the premiums at all?
Doing the wellness screenings? No, but that's part of our insurance package.
Okay, this is helpful, then. Okay, cool. All right, those in favor of the renewal for the health insurance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item S. Board to approve the following summer conditioning positions for 25-26 school year. Katie Cromer, Keisha Wright, Brian Carmichael, Paul Wright. I'll accept a motion.
I move.
Second.
All right, discussion.
This one's my fault. This should have been done before summer. They've already finished this, but it's the same for people who've done it for the last 10 years.
I thought. All right, those who, I'm sorry. Those in favor of summer conditioning positions being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item T. Board to approve the following coaches for 25-26 school year. Boys soccer volunteer, Matt Mindock, and football volunteer, Tom Wright. I'll accept a motion.
I move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mindock helped with middle school in the past, and now he's moving up to the high school. And Coach Wright was a paid coach last year, and he's moving down to be a volunteer.
All right, those in favor of the following coaches being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, I want to start by congratulating the boys that were here tonight that participated in the state track meet. Their hard work and dedication has paid off. Also, you know, commend Mr. Evans for the work that he does with both our cross-country and our track team. Currently, our enrollment sits at about 1,151. Now, that is the actual number of students who, K through 12, whose parents have completed the enrollment process. We still have 195 more that have not started it. So that would put us at like 1346. We know that some of those we may lose. But hopefully, we get a huge, huge increase. You know, we need to put some reminders out this week that school starts on Tuesday. Get your kid registered. And this Friday, we welcome our staff back. It's our first staff day, and our first student day is Tuesday, August 12. And that means that we have eight days of summer vacation left for our students.
All right, any questions from the board? Items from the chief of operations officer.
I just want to thank our custodial staff in all the buildings for getting everything ready for the new year. They've knocked everything out. They're all ready to go. Told me today that everything's good and ready, so.
Yeah, cool. I've seen they've done some things like the tree out front of the school has gone, resurfacing at the high school, middle school. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chad Nicum has done a really nice job for us this summer. He's been integral for a lot of those things, the trees and.
And juggling the project in the back of the school.
Yeah.
All right, items from administrators.
Happy to start the school year. It's great. We're one week ahead. This is when everybody starts coming in. So it was great to see a lot of teachers, and hopefully they're well-rested and get to enjoy their summer. Pretty good.
Same.
All right. Other items from visitors. All right. Items from board members, we'll start with John tonight.
Will the board out front give, like, upcoming events? Like the date board out front of high school?
Yeah, so interesting what we're going to do with that. We've actually turned it over to Mr. Gally in the student media class. So they have both the boards in front of the high school and the middle school, and so they're going to keep those updated all year.